Gentlemen, we're gonna have a little square.
Right, ladies and the other right.
Gentlemen, repeat after me. I.
All right.
I. solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and I will faithfully, objectively, impartially administer the Municipal Land Use Act of the State of New Jersey, and the ordinance is to incite land of the township of Belmond to the best of my ability, so help me God. Mr. Mayor?
He's right, man knows what he's talking about.
Meeting is called to order. Let's all stand for the flag symbol. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. To the great public. One nation under God, indivisible, veritable, just as for all.
Can you read the statement of certification of the meeting?
Certification of the meeting has been advertised according to the Sunshine Law.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Venero.
Here.
Zungri.
Here.
Inogorado.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Conti.
Here.
Walsh.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Minikini.
Here.
Bo. Rico.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
DiBiase.
Here.
DiLorenzo.
Here.
Can I have a motion for the approval in minutes of the June 8, 2017 meeting?
Sumo. Second.
Everyone, please call the roll.
Venero.
I take no part.
Zungri.
Take no part.
Inogorado.
Yes.
Kennedy.
abstain.
Conti.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Minikini.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
Tonight, we're gonna call for our reorganization.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I would like to open up nominations for the position of chairman.
Nominate.
Thank you.
Second.
Any other nominations? Motion to close?
Motion. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Zungri.
Yes.
Inogorado.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Minikini.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations. Can we have a nomination for vice chair, chairman?
I nominate Patricia Inogorado.
Second. Are there any other nominees? Motion to close? Motion to close?
Vote.
So who?
Call the roll.
Venero.
Yes.
Zungri.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Minikini.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
Congratulations. Should I have a motion for secretary?
Nominate Mr. Walsh. Second.
Any other nominations? Motion to close? Second. Call the roll.
Venero.
Yes.
Zungri.
Yes.
Inogorado.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Minikini.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
I'd like to have a nomination for board attorney.
Nominate Tom DiBiase.
Second.
Any other nominations? Close the roll. Second. Roll call.
Venero.
Yes.
Zungri.
Yes.
Inogorado.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Minikini.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I have a nomination for town engineer?
Harris.
Mr. Kennedy.
Harris.
Second. Mr. Harris and Mr. Inogorado, second. Any nominations? Close the roll. Please call the roll call.
Venero.
Yes.
Zungri.
Yes.
Inogorado.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Minikini.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Does someone like to make a motion, a nominee for recording secretary?
Yeah, motion to be called.
Second.
Close the roll.
Close the roll.
Please. Please call the roll, please.
Venero.
Yes.
Zungri.
Yes.
Inogorado.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Minikini.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
Someone like to nominate our shorthand reporter?
I nominate Michelle Quirk.
Second.
Any other nominations?
Close.
Close. Please call the roll.
Venero.
Yes.
Zungri.
Yes.
Inogorado.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Minikini.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have chairman's comments. Correspondence to payment of bills, anybody have any questions or comments? Under old business, we have the memorialized nine Stevens Street resolution. Can you call another roll on that?
Venero.
I take no part.
Zungri.
Take no part.
Inogorado.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Abstain.
Conti.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Minikini.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
And in that one, we're gonna have the vice chair sign and the secretary sign, the chairman is absent.
Under new business, we have an application before the board. It's PB 2017-02. It's the redevelopment 81-179 Belmont Avenue, block 111.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna recluse myself from hearing this, 'cause it's gonna have to come back before the council.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy, thank you. Does any more members live within 200 feet of this application, Belmont Avenue? Thank you.
Chairman, there's a point of order. The June 22 Belmont Times has advertisements for tonight, two public hearings, and two separate issues, for tonight, for public hearings. Which one are we hearing today?
Yeah, the only one on the agenda that I'm aware of is Belmont Avenue redevelopment.
Well, it's published in a paper, and one of them is to determine if the area is in need of redevelopment, and the other one is to hear redevelopment plans. And they're both in the June 22 paper.
We'll only hear is the redevelopment plan tonight, whether or not this area is in need of redevelopment. That's all that's on the agenda tonight.
All right, so you're, the one here that's published on top is to determine if it's an area in need of redevelopment.
That's the narrow issue tonight.
And then I'll have to go to the council?
If we, if the board determines that it's an area in need of redevelopment. Where would you like to stand?
Come up and get sworn in.
It's easier than reading stuff.
Well, I hate to talk to people when I'm, uh...
Andy, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
Please state your names, spell your last name for the record.
My name is Donald Meisel, that's M-E-I-S-E-L, and I represent CME. We are a firm that does engineering and planning, and I am a licensed planner, I have been for about 13 years, and I also worked in Essex County for almost 10 years. I was the planner in Orange for almost 10 years, that's why I'm in the show. Um, we worked together there for a short time. Essentially, you have a copy of the study. For those of you behind me and who may not be familiar, the site we're talking about is often referred to as the Old Pathmark Site, currently the site of Super Fresh Grocery Store now. It's nine and a half acres, mostly covered, either asphalt or building. The structure, which was built in 1980 or so, about 55,000 square feet. The thing that caught my attention right away is that there was a laundry or a dry cleaner on the very end of that shopping center, so that set off environmental alarms, which I'll talk about in just a second. But that is a location that's accessible by vehicle off of Belmont Avenue. It's also almost equidistant from two newer plate rail stations, Grove Street and Silver Lake. And when I initially started looking at this area, I said, well, why isn't there more attention given to Grove Street? I found out it's in Bloomfield. So, from a planning standpoint, there is a political and a geographic boundary there, but from a transit village concept, you're gonna be designing this to serve both stations, in my view. But that's further down the road. What we're trying to do tonight is determine if it meets the statutes for a redevelopment area. You are well versed in this, you've got several redevelopment areas in town already. It appears to be a tool that you've used well in the past, and it would seem that it's a tool you would use for this situation as well. The area is currently zoned at VE, which is a commercial shopping center district. In doing the research, we also found that there's an overlay zone there, but the overlay zone doesn't have any standards. So, it's there, but it's, you could develop standards for that site and apply them there, but at the present time, you have an option, but there are no standards to apply. So, when you look at this nine and a half acre site, you see a structure that's, it's still serviceable, certainly that there is an active business there. There are some cracks in the foundation and the walls that we found and documented in pictures. But what we looked at is the statutory criteria, and we determined, when I say "we," Peter Van den Koy is also a licensed planner, he's the chief planner at our office, he and I both signed this report and concur on the findings that are in here. We determined that because of the age and obsolescence of the building, the faulty layout, and the excessive lot coverage of the site, and it's nice that it's only one owner, one parcel, we did find out it was two parcels at one time, it's since been consolidated into one. But because of the excessive land coverage and the obsolescence of the lot, we determined that it met the D criteria. There's another criteria that I don't like to use by itself, but in this case, we have a D criteria to back it up, the so-called smart growth criteria. Smart growth is just another name for good planning, in my view. Call it something different every decade or so. But it's not a fully productive site. When I went there tonight and just watched for half an hour, maybe a tenth of the lot was being used by vehicles, a little bit of pedestrian traffic. It was interesting, they were checking the wells that are on site for contamination. So someone was out doing their duty, checking to see what those readings are. Now, there is a environmental report attached to our report. The people at StanTech were very, very helpful and very forthcoming with some of the problems that are there. Since there was a laundromat on site, they did find the things that are associated with laundromats, and that situation has actually been addressed. In the report, you'll see that they went into the building, actually dug up and removed all the contaminated soil, that was a result probably of the dry cleaning business being there. So that particular concern in the area has already been addressed, even before we addressed the area in need of redevelopment any further. So that's the good news. I'm sure you're all familiar with the concept of historic fill. It's everywhere in New Jersey, and it's on this site as well. So that poses some environmental concerns. There's some petroleum hydrocarbons, basically products that we usually find associated with gas stations where there are weaknesses. Those are in the groundwater, and then they also found some contamination in very deep wells, and they found the same substances that we have in Orange. So there's an underground network of water in Essex County. You can't really figure out where it's all coming from, but it's there and it's still circulating. They did say in the environmental report that because they removed the dry cleaning portion of the soil, they expect the water contamination to be not problematic, so that will remediate itself. They also have in the reports some recommendations for putting in a treatment of water and the site, so that at some point in the future, they will, you know, that situation will be addressed, pollution in the groundwater. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. They do not have what they now call random action outcome, but we used to call it a no further action letter. There are still steps. This was a phase one investigation that was done by the property owner and completed in May. They have more things to do, more investigation to do, but what they've done is eliminate problems that are sometimes associated with sites like this. Again, historic fill is very common, groundwater not being a point source, pollution of groundwater is important to know. It's also important to know there is groundwater pollution in the area that they can't quite track, but... So, it's nothing that apparently, it's not apparently, there's nothing that, StanTech fields cannot be overcome through engineering solutions, whether it's treating water, removing fill. But again, they will have to be, the developer or the owner of the site will have to be held to a pretty high standard if they're gonna put residential development on the site.
And the soil was, how much of the soil was tested already?
Oh, they've done samples all over the property, but what they did was they sampled the floor and the soil underneath in the former site of the dry cleaner laundromat.
So there's further testing that would be needed on the rest of the...
Not there, not on that site, but the rest of the site, you're gonna have to, before they put a residential complex up, they're gonna have to do borings and make sure that, you're gonna have capping recommendations, there're gonna be engineering solutions to some of these problems down the line. But wherever there's a residence, you can be sure they're gonna have to address the situation further, it's not been addressed at that point of a...
Is this an error?
Are you telling us that these, the only problem basically is the historic fill?
No, there are groundwater contamination.
It's groundwater, and that's not from the dry cleaner?
No, that is not, not a miss.
So what is it from?
Don't really know, it can be a series of places typically.
Do you have any history of that property?
That property is not necessarily a point source, it's just that the groundwater has contamination. One thing I should have mentioned, that they, as part of the study, they did an analysis of wells in the area where people might be drinking. I know that in Orange, you know, you tell people don't use the well water, but there's still well water out there. They found, I think, possibly one well within a half a mile radius where people might be pulling up water and using it. Hopefully, that's not the case, but that's a costly concern, you don't want people drinking this water.
I kind of hope you're right, because from past history, my understanding is there is contamination of mercury from the factory that they had problems with.
Now, again, StanTech should have, if there was a factory there, and they, they found the historic fill, I didn't see any reference to a factory in the report.
Definitely there's a factory.
I wouldn't be surprised, because they have sampled the soil, and they have sampled the water, and their findings are here. I mean, we only had, we only included 13 pages in this report, this was the user-friendly portion of the report. There's a lot more scientific information available on this, but I think it's important to note that this is not the cure-all-and-all report, they're gonna have to do more remediation, try and identify where that groundwater is coming from, if they can. But a lot of times, what you're reading in the groundwater is some gas stations that have leached into the water, and it takes a long time to get those parts per billion out of the system.
There's a gas station that's been here for years on the corner, not far from the property.
Harley?
I don't want to. I just wanted to ask a question. There's reference on here to the old Edison plant, which was Edison Battery. Many, many years ago, when I was a young guy, there was a major remediation that went on Alba Street to the residences because of contamination from basically acid pits that they had. Is there a link between that site and the Pathmark site?
I noticed that in, I was actually at that site today. I went and got my Golden Eagle pass, eligible for it now, before it goes up to $80. That site is now being fully redeveloped, believe it or not. It took 20 years, but they have the construction going up on the site of the contamination. So yeah, I don't know why Thomas Edison was referenced there, other than there were problems here, I'd have to go back and look, but...
To the degree that, what I was, so Alba Street runs parallel to the back end of the Pathmark building, and the pits were literally behind those houses that leached for years, they dug out two, three feet of soil around all those homes, and I had a job of putting some of them back together. This was mid-'80s, maybe.
Was the factory called Thomas Edison Cantopole? That was on the site?
It was Edison Battery, it was actually.
Yeah, okay, so that's what they're referring to in the report, my mistake. So yeah, they did, they are addressing that, and again, the historic fill is what is the component.
They were not talking West Orange Edison.
No, 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 I understand, I got it now. Because I was in West Orange and I read this, I said, what's the correlation? Now I understand.
Right, Alba Street.
So again, they did identify in the report that the factory was there, and what they found was it's associated with...
Right next to the factory.
Right next to the factory, left to the factory, right across.
Alba Street was, I guess, the backside of the factory.
It was the back of the factory, yeah.
Yeah, it was a venture of cleanup.
But thank you, that helps me understand why they had Thomas Edison reference in here when I was younger.
Yeah, it was a big disaster. It was considered to be one of the, here's a document in research, and it refers to as one of the great American disasters in a site on fire. But what I'd like to call to your attention is, I was preparing for this meeting, and I was trying to research the site. There was a case where it was signed by the judge in January 2016, and it was the employers' insurance of Wausau versus McGraw Edison Company and United States Fire Insurance Company. And actually, they were, they were looking for, they were looking for relief coverage of the effects of this plan. And it clearly addressed multiple sites owned and operated by McGraw Edison, and it specifically mentions 75 Belmont Avenue in, obviously, in our town. And it talks about the U.S. EPA Environmental Protection demanding that Cooper take responsibility for contamination that McGraw Edison caused, because Cooper bought, in effect, McGraw Edison. And it refers to two sites. It refers to the Bloomfield site, and then it refers to the Belleville site. And it says, these designations are potentially misleading, because each of the two sites straddles the towns of Bloomfield and Belleville. What it calls into effect is the fact that there was carbolic acid, mercury, zinc, because there were settling ponds at that site. Why were there settling ponds at that site? Because if you looked at the history of the water table, Edison was actually pumping water out of that lake to use for water. So they had what they called settling ponds. And settling ponds with carbolic acid and mercury, which by the way, drained specifically towards Peckel and towards the canal area. And what was happening was, this lawsuit was also all about the fact that there was a suit, because the water was then proceeding to go down the, what we call the second river, into the Passaic River. So, there's a sign, and it says, as of 2014, and I went to the lot today, I'm sure any of you might be able to spot that sign. It's right on Belleville Avenue, I don't know, sir, if you saw that site?
I believe we have a picture of it in our report.
All right, you have a picture of, and it's, the current sign is 2014. There was a prior sign that said 2010. Now, I'm not totally familiar with timelines and regulations, but I would assume that when they put the investigation in progress site up, there must be, there must be four year timelines involved, because the first was 2010, and then the site that's there right now, the sign, says 2014. So that, it's, the, yes, there was a historic dumping of contaminated soil to level out for property, but under that soil, because of the fact that that was the main, it wasn't one building, it was a huge conglomerate of buildings, and Edison owned almost all the way to Bloomfield Avenue, and that's the reason it's called Alba, in Edison Street, the intersection, and it go, went almost all the way to Franklin Street. And the problem that they had was, we didn't have sophisticated sewage at that point. So that you had, the sewage was created, the sewers were created to drain McGraw Edison. So what my concern is, is that I, I, I'm very sympathetic to development, but I'm very concerned about this site and this plan recommendation for residential or educational use. Because unless we are really clearing up the historic issues, mercury doesn't go away, mercury doesn't evaporate, we don't vent mercury. It suggests that the contamination is from the dry cleaner, the laundromat. The dry cleaner and the laundromat were attached to the end of the Pathmark. The wells are on the other side where the grass was, and I was out there, I, I was taking pictures of the locations of the wells. So I was out on that grass this morning, I'm sure the other people were, but if they did see someone, it was me, I was out there.
What you're actually...
The wells are not near the laundromat or the dry cleaner. Those, I also saw two empty drums, and the empty drums actually had very, very old stickers on it that said that they were lab, they were lab, they were testing, they were empty, but they were testing drums. So, whatever wells you're test, they were testing, the wells are way over here near the fencing in the lot, and the laundromat was on the other end. And we talk about smart planning, yes, but I need to say, it wasn't that we weren't smart in planning, it's that we couldn't do anything with it. Because maybe it's not super hot, but it's dirty, and drainage is the issue.
That's what the report said.
Yeah, so...
And what you're doing is making the case for designating it an area in need of redevelopment, because, because then the developer...
But my, but my concern is, I'm gonna bring it up as a member of the board for the record, but my concern is, as a member of this board and as a citizen here in the future of our town, is that at this point, unless we had much more of a thorough report, I'm not comfortable with it being used for educational, residential, or health-related uses of it.
But that's not the use for it. You know, what's gonna be used for it?
Well, it's designated in here already, it's, it's right in the report.
We're not here to determine that yet.
Well, it's in here.
Depending on what the final use...
It's redevelopment, it is.
Depending on what the final use would be, that would be the level of cleanup that would be needed.
No, your redevelopment allows for certain permitted uses. In your plan, am I correct?
That's the current zoning that's there now, ma'am.
I know, and I'm saying, whether it's current or not, it doesn't belong here because of the issues.
I would, I would not state that as...
Well, that's all right, if you don't state it.
No, I'm just saying, the zoning is there now, they could go now and do all the things that are permitted uses there, as long as they follow the protocol. But what, but what you have is an open, active investigation being done by a licensed site remediation professional, and nothing is gonna happen on that site until that site has been cleared, depending, again, your point is well taken, the wells may all be The wells may all be near the pathmark. I have not seen a map of where all the well sites are. I would bet there are more wells on that site than we know. And there are wells in the neighborhood that we certainly can test more. The report is a Phase One investigation. You have Phase Two, and then you have Final, and then you have the industrial and residential standards, so there's a lot to do. But what I will do is, I will take what you've said into consideration. If you designate this area, then in the redevelopment plan that would follow, we will have those steps laid out to protect the health, welfare of the citizens.
I'm not being... I just want to quote your attention, that as simply a layperson within the community and not having the expertise of other people, I simply read, under, it was on page five, B-dash-E commercial shopping center permitted principal uses.
Schools?
Not conditional uses, principal uses, it says, "Schools."
That's just the current zoning, ma'am. There's no proposed zoning.
That's the zoning now.
All right, well, I'm trying to say that in this document, I would want that modification.
I have a question. If the board were to determine this was an area in need of redevelopment, any development that would occur on that site would have to meet the level of cleanup that that would indicate residential or...
Well, what would happen next is, if you determine that it is, it goes to City Council, and you can help the councillor at any time. If it's actually designated, then it usually follows as the council authorizes a redevelopment plan to be done for that area. And again, that document would come back to this board for their review and comment before it goes back to council. So, there are a lot of steps before anybody puts another shovel in the ground, other than for testing.
Might not that be our best way to clean that site up?
Well, that's what I was saying, that was the point.
Or else it's just going to linger the way it is.
And, you know, we're into this process now about twenty years. Redevelopment used to be a lot easier than it is today. The threshold for proof is really a lot higher than it used to be. And eminent domain, we don't even use anymore, unfortunately, in some cases.
I think we just want to make it clear that tonight, our focus is on a very narrow issue. Does the board believe that there's enough evidence to declare this area in need of redevelopment?
Correct.
And maybe we could ask you, as our professional, to put the following opinion on the record, and you've got it in several forms.
Correct.
So, within the framework of sound planning principles, do you believe that this area is an area in need of redevelopment?
I do. And using the criteria of age and obsolescence, which is statuteually a criteria E, and then using the smart growth criteria, which is conditional criteria H.
I think our... We just believe you here has a comments that hurts.
It is one... I haven't seen the whole remedial action report, but just looking at what excerpts are here, there's at least seven or eight monitoring wells that they mentioned in here. And normally, when you are monitoring a property, and I'm sure there were hundred, at least a hun... I would imagine how many soil borings they took for, you know, around that site. But normally, what you do is, you set a monitoring well at the upstream side of the property, and you set several at the downstream side of the property. So, you're monitoring what kind of groundwater coming into the site, and the groundwater where it leaves the site. So, maybe that's why you're seeing monitoring wells on the grass area, not near the pollution itself, but I'm sure if you see a map... If I saw this whole report, you would see numerous monitoring wells on that site.
What I will do is, I'll contact the firm and see if we can get that map, so that I can distribute it to everyone here. It shouldn't make a difference on the outcome for tonight, but...
I actually have one.
You have... There we go, instant map.
This is from Stan Tech's report.
Wonderful. Where did you find it?
Yeah.
The thick version?
Yeah.
Can I share this around?
Sure.
Give it to you, so... How many wells are on there, if I studied? Did you count them or estimate?
I read a while ago, I think the soil was twelve. I'm not sure what the...
Twelve on the soil borings?
But they were all over the place, and I have the DEP's report, which a lot of which is not reflected in the Stan Tech report.
Sir, we're creating a record. Would you give your name, please?
Sure. Lee Dory, nineteen May Court, Middletown.
I'm sorry, say it one more time?
Lee, L.E.E., D is in David, O.R.R.Y.
And the address again?
May Court, nineteen May Court, Middletown.
And why are you here this evening?
I film the public meetings for Bellevle. I run a blog called Essex Watch, and I'm a community activist, so...
Yes, just for some enlightenment, what would be the advantages of going to a redevelopment plan, since this is an ongoing commercial property, and you specifically say on nine point one, that the owner has a plan to redevelop portions of the site?
Well, what we've seen missing from the permitted uses is residential. So, I'm sure that's in the mind of the developers, the residential density. What I was interested in is the light rail situation. My expertise is in transit villages, where we have typically allowed forty-five units per acre, if you're around a train station or a transit hub. Light rail is a little different. I thought that maybe forty-five units per acre might be a little excessive. So, some of the research I've done is more in the twenty-five units per acre range for light rail to sustain, for those units to utilize light rail in an effective way. So, but that's, I think that's what's missing.
And what's the typical size of those units?
Typical size? Well, again, if you're looking at nine acres times twenty-five units, that was the maximum they would be allowed to put on. Nine times twenty-five is two-hundred-and-twenty-five? Is that right? So, on a nine-acre site, they could do up to that. And what you're also looking at, most builders aren't going to go over four stories, because they have a different construction standard. So, you're looking at a height of maybe forty to fifty feet maximum on that site.
Multiple bedrooms?
I would think no more than two. There's also a trend to going to much smaller units, meaning four, five hundred square feet in some cases. But I would suspect you would have a combination of studios, ones in two bedrooms, no threes. Only time you're going to see threes, if you have an affordable housing component, then the funding for those type of projects requires a thirty percent free headroom.
Also have schoolchildren and green space for them to play and all those other issues.
But again, that would be the thing that we would do in the next step. If they're going to recommend twenty-five units per acre, put two-hundred-and-fifty units there to twenty-five, you're definitely going to demand open space, public space connectivity, clean the light rail. I'm not a big advocate of excess parking. Shared parking is what I prefer, and I think most of you are planning savvy, that the fact that driverless cars are on the way and almost here is dramatically going to change urban landscapes, in New Jersey especially. In five years, you're going to be able to call your car and have it pick you up, so you won't have to have your parking space right in front of your apartment or house. You can put it on brownfields, like half a mile away. I'm sorry, ma'am.
Traffic to get out of the lake right now is horrendous. When they block the Claromass Drive, it backed up traffic on both sides of the Silver Lake. You can't, you couldn't move.
I must admit, I had fun with your one-way streets today, and I'm glad that the chief was over here and not watching me navigate town.
We have cameras.
Parking's a big issue, and I'm worried about the infrastructure. Right now, on the Silver Lake, we're out of water more than we're at water.
Well, again, we're ahead of ourselves. What would happen next? So, you... An area has been declared in need of, a plan is developed, you approve the plan, and then what typically happens is that the city negotiates with the developer for the improvements that are needed to develop the residential units. That's where your environmental issues come in, your infrastructure, your parks, all of that gets negotiated before anything happens to go. The incentives of being in a redevelopment area are beneficial to the developer, and that needs to come back to the city, and we will certainly recommend that that happen. Not knowing about, you know, how bad the traffic is, that might be a condition that you have also, that once this development is proposed, a traffic study needs to be done to show what's going to happen to these people. Are they going to take the light rail? Are they going to have to have a car in light rail? Are they going to share cars?
We get a little gun-shy, because we wouldn't even be talking about this site, because New Jersey Transit wanted to give us a firehouse years ago, and that went down the drain. So, it kind of makes me think and get very cautious, and you know, you don't want history to repeat itself. So, that's, I think, something...
So, the one thing I can say, if you have two-bedroom units and under, the impact on your schools should be minimal. Most of the transit village developments have been very... The impact of school children, even in Orange, which is half of the transit villages, is in affordable subsidized units. They aren't moving there with children, so we're keeping a close watch on that.
Is there any funding available for smart growth or transit village, you know, if DOT has grants for transit villages?
Right. That's something that you could pursue. I can certainly look at that. If I write the redevelopment plan for you, which I'd love to do, look at that as a source. The money isn't this, again, it's as easy as it used to be. Orange was a transit village. I think we got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which we used for wayfinding signage in town. So...
Is there any more questions from the board? If not, I'd like to open it up to the public. We're just going to ask the public to come up, name, address, and we're going to square everyone in this evening. Mr. Fran Tantone?
I'd like to see this. I'd be glad to. Thank you. Please.
Or we can have one or...
We're actually going to square everyone, whether it's a comment or a question. And, sir, we're going to swear you in, because you did make comments before.
Okay.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear that testimony you are about to give and the testimony you have already given is the truth to the hukidah?
I do.
State your name and address.
Lee Dory, is in David, O.R.R.Y.
Thank you. And Mr. Fran Tantone, if you swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, and that the truth to the hukidah?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Vincent Fran Tantone, one-twenty-nine, I'll expect that, available. Yeah, I'd like to get asked these gentlemen from C and E, I forgot your names. I've been available for fifty years, and I remember when that shopping center was built. Now, you stated, one of your statements in the beginning was, "It's the faulty layout of the building and obsolescence of the lot," which is criteria A. This is the plan from back then. Now, it's a triangle lot, as you see. The pathmark building was built on the south side of the building, with a separate driveway for delivery, so it didn't interfere with the public. And on the north side is the parking lot, and to the west is a proposed future retail use, and to the north, two retail uses. Now, that's, in my opinion, living there fifty years and contracted for forty bucks, that looks like a pretty good layout of a shopping center.
It looks like they created the parking for all of the expansion that would have happened over...
So, how is it... Your statement was, "It's a faulty layout of the building and an obsolescence of the lot." How does a parking lot become obsolete?
In this... Stormwater is a major concern. There's just way too much asphalt for the use that's currently on that site now. As I mentioned, ten to fifteen percent maximum of the parking spaces were used at five o'clock this afternoon. Normally, five o'clock would be a pretty busy time to shop. All I'm saying is, the lot is covered, and there are more parking spaces than there need to be for that particular use.
You were here this afternoon?
Yes, sir, I was.
Okay. But did you notice that about twenty-five, again, just estimate from looking at it, twenty-five to possibly thirty-five percent of the lot is grass on the north and the west side? It's not all paved. So, you still have a lot of previous area there. So, how are you saying the entire lot is paved? I mean, I just want the record to show...
I'll be very clear. There's too much parking for that site, and it shouldn't be covered to the extent that it is.
Well, because the other sites were not developed. But that plan, it was a good plan if the other two, the three parcels were rebuilt.
I'm sure that the criteria for parking was very excessive, and they had to create all those places.
You just want the record to show that, I don't believe it's an obsolete lot, and it's not completely paved. They're still imperious. But the other problem I have, and this is a statement, is, I think, Mr. Walsh, if this is determined, to only to determine it's an area in need of redevelopment, why are we even discussing residential building? This is not the time.
Correct.
This is later, and the same thing, Chairman, I think you said it when we spoke on Terry Street. We shouldn't even be mentioning development.
This is a very narrow...
It's only the current, if it's an area. And I don't know why, if I believe that developers might be present, I don't feel like they're present. And also, I think, as we clarified your statement, you also said, "I don't know how many and where the wells are." Well, we showed you that, we all have the map, citizens of all, which we paid good money to go down to the DEP and get all the documents on the site. They're approximately, I think, six to seven inches deep. We have every one of these documents, and you board members should have it. On that map, I don't know if you've passed it around, you see where all the wells were drilled, the dates, twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, to the present. Also, in that report, I couldn't print them off, I printed seven pages of what basically Mr. Short was talking about. There's super contamination there. Arsenic, lead, nickel, mercury, antimony, and the proportions are there. And this is from the DEP report, which was done, and Stan Tech's may not, I believe they're aware to have this. Iron, a hundred and fifty times allowable units. Mercury, twenty times was allowed. Arsenic, sixteen times was allowed. Lead, fifteen times was allowed. Magnesium, fourteen times. Nickel, nine times. Sodium, beryllium, thallium, and all that. Extreme concentrations on there. And then, you know, sorry, let me get your name.
It's Don. You can call me Don.
Don. In his report, he wasn't sure it was there, Edison Battery, but this report tells you. It says that, from nineteen oh-six to nineteen seventy something, it was the Thomas Edison Chemical Plant, and it tells all the materials stored at the property included fuel oil, coal, coal ash, nickel sulfate, nickel hydrate, iron oxide, iron sulfate, other acids and bases, and all the stuff. This is all in the report, you know, and these are things that our paid consultants say he doesn't know.
Yeah, and I agree with Mr. Fran Tantone. Everybody agrees that we do know that the site is contaminated. That we all know. But I think that's one of the reasons that would make it a candidate for an area to redevelopment.
I agree with you.
We don't want to leave it like that. It's been like that way too long, and I think if we can come up with a plan to clean it up, and, I mean, everyone knows there's state standards, whatever is determined that goes there, it has to be cleaned up, state standards to that. Whether it be commercial, industrial, whatever goes there, it has to be cleaned up to those standards. And that's, Mr. DiLorenzo will tell you, no building can proceed without being tested up and up to state standards, so that, we all agree with you.
I agree with you, and that's why I came here tonight, to make sure, because it was confusing, the newspaper advertisement said both. It was going to be a hearing to see if it was an area in need of redevelopment, and then the other advertisement says, "Two hears, a hearing on the redevelopment plan." Well, common sense, you can't do both on the same night anyway, so I want to know. But I agree with you. But here's the thing, the residential should not even be discussed tonight. That's something that...
We're not discussing any use.
We're not discussing any use.
But the paid consultants, Don, keep bringing it up, and he's talking about parking. He agrees with the less parking, you know? He agrees with the transit village. He don't think we need enough parking. He's talking about a development plan, which he's out of order. A paid consultant, he's not doing his job.
That's one of the uses that can be considered. At this point, there's no development plan that we have. No member, I don't think anyone in the town, has seen a proposal. So, right now, we're determining, should this be cleaned up? Is it an area in redevelopment? And we're going to proceed from there. Right now, there's no...
I hope you concentrate on that, and it's true. And the final statement, oh, I would never bring it up at this meeting, but I have to because Don brought the residential aspect into it. Number one, go around the corner, Bloomfield Avenue, watch Essing. Hundreds of thousands of units. Go look at the parkway of Bloomfield Building. Go look, my son lives two blocks from the train station in Bloomfield, right across from the train station, they can't even fill those up yet. We are building over density. Please, we're at the end of the bubble of rental units. Please, Bellevle, let's, if development comes up, let's not go any more residential. None of your high rises have been approved. And again, Mr. Don made a statement that your past redevelopment plans worked out right. I don't know if he lives in Bellevle, but we got eighty units twelve years ago, approved for Washington and Williams, never built. We got thirty-six units around the corner on Rutgers Street, approved thirteen years ago, never built. Sixty units, approved on the school one site, never built. So, in all due respect to Don, he's got to come to the Bellevle School of Knowledge. We'll educate him a little better than what he's stated tonight here. So, please, I understand the area in need of development, follow that through. I don't think any testimony should be accepted in regard to development. This is not the part of time for it. And in the future, just worry about approving any more development, because the bubble's gonna break like it broke in 1989. Remember that real estate bubble? And 2000 year, this is the next bubble that's about to break. And just, I'd gladly drive you to Bloomfield and show you that they can rent these things.
Bloomfield's pretty successful, I know.
They can rent these things.
Pretty successful, Bloomfield. I know that the Crosswalk State, the first two buildings completely rented. They put two more buildings up because they're fully rented.
Go look the far-
Saving them 20 years to get it up.
I think there's another gentleman, Mr. Jerome, about here.
Can you be sworn in?
We're gonna try to keep our comments, if you are in favor of this area for redevelopment.
Please raise your right hand.
Or against.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
I certainly do.
Please state your name and address.
Francis F. Fleishman III, 132 Franklin Street, Belleville.
Oh, your last name?
Oh, sure. F-L-E-I-S-C-H-M-A-N.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce this to each member, if I could have it distributed.
Will I have it marked as an exhibit?
They show the signs that are on the property about environmental investigation and remediation in progress. The first one is one I took in February. It is basically, it's located by, if I can orient you to the property, there's a dirt road by the property that goes back to, I think, a power plant that's owned by PSCG, the Dirty Transit. The sign was there in February, pretty prominent. If you look at the second picture, it looks like it's been tarped and taken down. I'm not sure why that is. Thirdly, the third picture is of the sign that is on the actual old Pathmark property, for lack of a better term, at this time. There's been a lot of talk tonight about the environmental aspect, you know, Don brought it up, that sort of thing. There seems to be maybe some missing pieces of information to a certain extent. Yes, Mr. DiDio?
Yeah, we're trying to create a record here, and we understand there are serious environmental issues. If you could bring something new to the conversation, we'd appreciate it. We understand that.
Okay, that's fine. Actually-
Are you in favor of this area being declared an area in need of redevelopment?
No, sir, I'm not.
Tell us why you're against it.
Honestly, I, you know, I have a lot of, you know, I have a lot of reservations. And I think, you know, some of the, some of the members here have expressed certain things. Mr. Nogarato said before that, you know, there've been promises made in the past of things that just never were, you know, they never came to fruition. I'm not sure what the specific ramifications would be of an area in need of redevelopment. I've heard different things about it. I've heard that sometimes it affects property values in the area. It just kind of brings the property, the other properties down to a certain extent. Silver Lake is in, I'm not gonna say trouble, but it's seen better days. And honestly, for me, I don't wanna see anything else damage it.
Tom, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
So you're saying you prefer to keep it the way it is, then? That's what you're saying? So just so we as a board understand what you're saying. You're happy with the way it looks now and everything like that?
I mean, the way that it looks?
Well, the way that it is. When you look at it enough, the way that it is.
I mean, the thing is, is that the way that you frame that, the way you frame that question, of course, when I wanna see the site remediated, of course, I don't want-
Well, that's what this is about, sir.
Okay, all right, so-
That's why maybe, I just wanna understand what you're saying, Mr. The Attorney asked you. I need to understand to make a logical decision.
Okay. In terms of your question, the premise of your question, okay, I would like to see the site remediated, if that answers your question.
Remediated, but not redeveloped, you're so-
Correct.
How do you define remediated?
Getting the contaminants and, you know, the chemicals and the metals out of the ground.
Cleaned up.
Cleaned up.
Okay.
Cleaned up, but not necessarily redeveloped.
So that has nothing else to do with it? Yeah, it certainly does.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, one more comment, and we're gonna try to get to some other people. Anything new, though? We don't want repetition.
Okay. If you don't mind, if this is, you know, if this is allowed, I would like to introduce somebody who might be able to shed a little more information on what we've been talking about.
Well, we're not gonna take any testimony this evening on any environmental issue. But if someone would like to come up and say, my opinion is that this is an area in need of redevelopment for the following reasons, or I am against it for the following reasons, the way you did, we would be glad, we'd be glad to hear that, and we'd like to know if they're residents or not, yes.
All right, so-
Is there any new comment you would like to make before we call on someone else?
No, sir.
So thank you for coming to see me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that have a question? If not, at this time, we'd like to close the-
Just one comment, if I could. Obviously, I represent the parties who own the property. And Mr. DiDio has made it perfectly clear, so has the planner.
And we're not gonna square you in council as an attorney, obviously.
No. This is a determination, whether it's an area in need of redevelopment, not what is to be built. What is to be built should not be an issue at all tonight. And the testimony from the different people, including Mr. Frantantonio, has indicated it's in need to be determined an area of redevelopment. The only question I have, and I'll ask them later from Mr. Frantantonio, is what report he was reading from. But the last gentleman who said he was against talked about it, seeing better days, not sure of the ramifications, promises didn't come to fruition. Those things go towards making the determination. There hasn't been any testimony that really mitigates making this decision today to declare this an area in need of redevelopment. So I just wanted to point that out, and again, I'd like to see the report that Mr. Frantantonio's talking about in the future.
If I may, Mr. Gashill?
We're gonna do that off-lever, because we're still-
Stantex report is delivered second.
I gotta, I gotta-
Which Don should have.
If we have no further questions from the public, we're gonna close the public portion of the meeting now. Someone would like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of this report to declare this an area of need of redevelopment?
I oppose.
This is Nogarato seconded. Perman, please call the roll.
Any comments first, from the board members? Call it.
Please call the roll.
Vinerow?
Yes.
Zungri?
Yes.
Inogarato?
Yes.
Kennedy? Conti?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Minakini?
Yes.
Rika?
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Someone?
Second.
The meeting is adjourned.